Call of November 3rd, Apopka City Council Meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, can you give us the pledge, prayer, and fact of the day?
Yes, sir.
Listen, I pray that God will come once again and thank you for the blessing bestowed upon us. Thank for this opportunity for us to serve a service to this community. We ask the world to continue to bless all our valued efforts. Bless these who are present today in thy son Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray for the best. On November 5th, 1941, the Japanese fleet received a top secret order that in a month's time Pearl Harbor was to be bombed along the layer, the Dutch East Indies, and the Philippines. Relations between the United States and Japan had deteriorated quickly since Japan's occupation of Indochina in 1940. In September 1941, President Roosevelt issued a statement dropped about British Prime Minister Winston Churchill that threatened war between the United States and Japan should the Japanese encroach any further on territories in Southeast Asia or the South Pacific. Fedeko Toko, the Minister of War, who would soon be Prime Minister, had no intention of withdrawing from captive territories and constructed an American threat of war and ultimatum to prepare to deliver the first blow in the Japanese-American confrontation, the bombing of Pearl Harbor. I pray for that.
Okay. All right. Proclamations. Let's see. Okay, we've got two proclamations for today. We've got the Week of the Family and I don't, oh, she made it. Good, good, good. Okay. All right. All right, this is the proclamation for the family. Let me read this to you. Whereas the family is the foundation of the city of Apopka, it's the family that instills pride and a sense of community in our city, and whereas Apopka is blessed with a multitude of families, an essential part of its culture, social, and spiritual fabric, and whereas strong families are at the center of strong communities, and we should take time to honor the importance of families and recognize the special connections that support and strengthen them throughout the year, and whereas during the celebration of family, we will also remember and pray for the families of our men and women serving in the military, and whereas by strengthening the family unit, our communities, cities, and nation will be stronger for future generations. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim November 6th, 2021 through November 13th, 2021, to be Week of the Family. Come on.
I just want to thank Apopka for being a wonderful place for families all year long.
How many years have you been doing this?
Probably 20.
Next up, we also have one for Mobility Week. Let me read this one as well. Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe multimodal transportation choices, and whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives, and/or implement new policies, and whereas Mobility Week is also an opportunity for individuals to explore the various transportation choices available to them, and think about how many multi- multi-transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, improves community health, and whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the City of Apopka's key priorities of promoting pedestrian safety and alternative modes of transportation, and whereas the City of Apopka supports Mobility Week by promoting safe multimodal transportation options, now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 29th through November 5th, 2021, as Mobility Week here in the City of Apopka. So, thank you. Is she, who have we got here? You want to just, well, come on down, we'll get.
I wanted to take a couple of minutes, oh, a couple of seconds to just thank you. This is very close to our hearts. The department is very, recognizes the importance of our partners. We working together, we can improve the mobility for all users, and we recognize, you know, Apopka as being one of those partners with us. So, thank you so much for this proclamation. We hope that you'll join us biking with our challenge, bicycling challenge. It goes until the end of this month, and anyone can participate, all ages and all types, and then register and win some prizes. So, I hope you join us.
Sorry, can I, can I just have your name?
Yes. Mine, I'm sorry, I need to start there. So, my name is Libertad Acosta Anderson, and I'm with the Department of Transportation Modal Office. I'm the Passenger Operations Manager, and then we've been working with the City of Apopka for several years with Mobility Week. So, appreciate your partnership.
One of the things that we're working on, I think, I know Cole's working on it for next year, is doing a, I know they have the East Orange County Five-City Bike Ride. We want to try to have a West Orange County Five-City Bike Ride. So, that's, that's one of our, our goals for next year. So, we're excited about that.
We'll be working with you because you have a lot of assets. So, yes, let's show them off and get people used to using them. That'd be awesome.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. You betcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
We have a presentation first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. Gladimir and James Hitt, are the tag team in it?
Good afternoon. Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director, City of Apopka. When coming aboard as the Finance Director this year, one of my goals was to create an automated process for the annual budget book. The OpenGov software being presented today, we allowed for the departments to work collaboratively, streamline workflows, and provide prompt financial reporting with forecasting capabilities that you have requested when you hired me. These tools will ultimately eliminate manual process, increase accuracy, and improve planning for strategic objectives. OpenGov was authorized for a piggyback contract award for annual budget and financial reporting purposes during the City Council meeting held on October 13, 2021. The software also offers a citizen serve module for the Community Development Department, which Mr. Hitt will expand on the, during his introduction and presentation before Open Gov comes in. Thank you.
Good afternoon. As Gladimir mentioned, we've been looking at doing a online permitting software for the last four years, and we've gone through a couple of different companies that just didn't quite pan out as well as what the OpenGov system can actually provide for the City of Apopka. In Community Development, we have two different divisions, or actually three different divisions, but the, the primary ones are going to be benefiting from this besides the people that are submitting for permits, and it's not just big developments, but it's also for fence permit, or a wall permit, or a sign permit, smaller permits, is the Building Division, which has, kind of give you, I got a little bit of a history thing for, for this. Back in 2018, we processed 5,100 permits. In 2019, dropped a little bit to 4,600. Last year, we had 6,079. This year, we still have three months that I've got to add on here. We're up to about 6,000 right now, and we still have three more months, and these are usually the hot months because everybody wants to get their permits in before the end of the year. So, we're averaging 660 permits on a month, each month right now. Last year, it was 506. So, that'll give you an idea of the, how much we've got going. In addition, last year, for the inspections, we had 1,234 inspections. This year, with three months to go, we're already at 1,500, actually almost 1,600. It was 1,598. So, we're way above the curve right now. And, you know, people were saying that this is going to be a slow year. It's not. If anything, it's sped up. So, with the number of permits that we've got coming in right now, it's all paperwork right now. I mean, literally paperwork. For those of you that have come upstairs, you can see the mounds of paper, and they get shifted from, from the Building Division over to Planning, over to Engineering. Fire Department will also come up and also review different plans depending on the size of the type of development that are coming in. So, all of that is all paperwork at this stage. So, what we're doing is going to be going online for the submittals. What that allows us to do is actually check those, those plans in, those permits in, and then send them to those different divisions that need those plans to review, all at the same time, not a paper shuffle from one table to another table to another table to another table. We're expecting this to obviously increase the efficiency for the, for the Building Division. In addition, we've got, in the Planning and Zoning Division, we do produce a, about every three, four months, Phil Martinez in our, in our department does put together a development projects list and map, and those are the ones that we usually send out, and we also provide to the Chamber of Commerce to kind of give everybody an idea of what type of developments and where they're going, where they're being developed. The same scenario is with that. When we get a site plan, submittal, or a variance request, or a land use, or a zoning request, or a fence permit, that is all paperwork right now. We require printed copies, a disc, to be able to send these things out, but with this opportunity with the OpenGov, we can do that online also, and also send those to the different divisions, different departments in order to do the review itself. So, it's going to be a lot more efficient in regards to how fast we can get these going. And to kind of give you a real quick idea for the different development projects, we get, we process probably at least 100 site plans a year. That's on a ballpark figure. But our current project list, we have 72 items on this project list, and we've got about, almost 15 million square foot of non-residential coming in. About 9 million square feet, 9 to 10 million square feet is the industrial warehousing, and then the rest of that is also commercial, and, you know, obviously, we get the, we get the publics coming in, we've got another couple of locations that are coming in also. So, those are all put into that, into that mix. And for dwelling units, we've got about 9,600 units coming in. That includes apartments and single-family and townhomes. And what I like to always say is that because we've got a code, and we've got a brand-new code that, well, I consider it brand-new from 2019, we're doing different amendments that help us to control the growth a little bit better. I'm not going to say we're a friend of development, but we make it so that people can see what is required for those developments. And a lot of that is already available online, the Land Development Code, we always send the municipal contact out, but the, the, the opportunity for going online for these, for these submittals is tremendous. It's going to make, make staff a lot more efficient and just, just make it a lot easier to review those plans online. Obviously, we can always print things out, but if we can go online, that's what, that's what we're supposed to be doing anyway, especially with the Building Division. So, with that, can turn it over to our, I believe this is Matt, from, from OpenGov. Turn that a little higher.
Afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Matt Stoll. I'm the Regional Manager for OpenGov. I'm based out of Tampa, Florida, so just west of you guys, depending on traffic, 60 minutes or 60 hours, just depending on how it is. But, thank you for the time today. What I'm going to do is just walk you through a little bit of the understanding of the current partnership between OpenGov and the city, and the continued expansion with these most recent improvements and what's on the agenda before you today. So, OpenGov is a completely cloud software-as-a-service organization, providing specific government functions in its core areas to cities, counties, and state agencies across the entire U.S. We are working with over 1,000 different governments today, over 50 within the state of Florida. So, we work with all sizes and ranges of government, municipalities such as City of Tampa, Clearwater, Fort Myers, Northport, quite a good range, as well as state agencies. We're working with the Department of Financial Services here within the state of Florida. So, we know Florida very well. It's a very strong base for us. My colleague, Rabin Saw, who's also here today, is also based out of the state of Florida and works directly with the city already. So, quite an extensive experience within the state. And what we do, and what we're going to do with the city, is offer these specific services in a couple of different areas. The procurement side of things is a project that's already underway. You guys may formerly know that as ProcureNow, that the group voted on and is wrapping up that final implementation now. What that does is your public solicitations, your RFQs, your RFPs, to bring in new business to the city, that string lines that collaboration, and really what Mr. Hitt was talking about, there's a lot of manual processes at the city, a lot of paper-bound processes that unfortunately city staff have a lot of, you know, labor built into bringing those processes around different departments within the organization. What these tools really do is bring those online in a secure collaborative format for administration, elected officials, and the public to engage with them in an efficient manner. So, that's the procurement side of things. We're going to talk about the budgeting and the community development here a little bit further in detail. As I just walked through the collaboration, the community development, the sourcing of these types of bid solicitations, I want's public to actually do business with the City of Apopka in a more efficient way. So, we've seen a lot of great end results with others in the state, with Leon County, Alachua County, and others that are using this procurement site, is that they're actually seeing an increased registrant of vendors that want to work with those governments because of the ease of using this type of software. The budgeting side of things, as Gladimir was outlining for you, is going to really engage the elected officials and the public with that annual documentation process. So, it really is a labor of love, bringing forward all of that documentation, all of that narrative, all of the hard work throughout the entire year, and putting it in a collaborative environment online. We're seeing a lot of adoption on this throughout the entire state of Florida, especially being able to do this in an 88 compliant manner. We know this is a very key issue for the City of Apopka and amongst many others throughout the state. This is something that the City of Tampa most recently headlined with within the state as they released their FY22 book with us in this interactive format. So, we're very excited to be doing that and kicking that off here and be producing that book within the next 10 weeks for the city. The community development side of things is not only going to streamline, as Mr. Hitt outlined, the internal collaboration, the internal workflows, approvals, and collection of revenue, it's going to also streamline the communication with your contractors, your business owners for those business tax receipts, and those applying for new initiatives, new licenses throughout your city. So, it's a full-service, online platform that allows for, you know, ease of use of, hey, we don't have to come into City Hall, we don't have to come in and manually transfer papers over. All of this can happen digitally, and the communication can happen over mobile device, over a tablet. They don't have to be sitting in front of their computer to be able to do this type of communication. Some of the examples of what this will look like in the public, on the community development side, the whole goal of this is to streamline revenue collection for the city. So, this isn't trying to make processes more complicated, this isn't trying to add software in for no reason. This is about how can the City of Apopka collect more revenue, and the citizens of Apopka want to do business with the city in a more efficient manner. So, as you can see here, we provided some examples from Cocoa Beach and what they're doing across their community development side of things, all of the different permits, all of the different business-type licenses, as well as on the right-hand side here, that's some of the administration-type workflow that Mr. Hitt and his team will be going through on the approvals and recommendations for those licenses and permit approvals. On the dynamic communication side, this is more on that public engagement, public transparency with the budget documentation, is to where folks will be able to go directly on the city's website, interact with your financial, your performance information, as well as other highlights from what the city is doing throughout the year on narrative context and base. You can see some examples here from Hallendale Beach, Pompano Beach, Pasco County, and the City of Tampa, all notable OpenGov customers in the state. And then finally, this is not only a public engagement tool, it also is an internal administration and performance management tool. So, being able for the administration team to have access into performance across the different departments of the city, look at our folks on budget, on time, are we tracking other key performance indicators of what we see from the elected officials, key sensitive areas for you and your commission and district, and other areas that you want to see as priorities for the city. That's all I had for today. I do appreciate the time, Mayor Nelson, the Commissioners, and let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Security, obviously, that's the, the big concern nowadays, and with all the breaches, different thing. Has there ever been a breach or, or a loss of information with this?
So, good question, Commissioner. So, all of this with cloud, software-as-a-service, all of this is operated by Amazon Web Services. So, this actually enhances your security from moving from an on-premise where you're hosting security and information into a secure cloud environment, where we're constantly making backups of the information, there's no local installs, there's no local management of that, and it's hosted by Amazon Web Services all domestically, so there's no storing of information internationally at any time.
Okay, I know Rob's done a great job with our security here, so I want to make sure that we keep that record.
No, and certainly, and Rob was a key part of this evaluation, and I apologize for not mentioning that earlier. So, Rob was, you know, very thorough in the questions and how this aligns with what the city currently has from a technology infrastructure, and how this would work along other components of the financial management system.
If Rob's thumbs up, that gives me a lot better.
Yeah, as long as he's not yanking me off the stage, I think we're okay.
Two thumbs up.
Well, I, I know that the departments will be very happy because I've gone up to the Building Department, the Community, and I've seen the mounds of paper that comes in, and it'll certainly help the developers because they all have to come track into City Hall and bring all the paperwork, and sometimes they're carrying all these roles, and so, obviously, it'll save trees, and just the paper accumulation alone is, is a benefit. So, I know that our staff will be very happy.
Commissioner Smith?
I believe the caveat is going to be that it's interactive, and so our residents is going to appreciate that as well, so.
Absolutely.
Glad to have you aboard.
Commissioner Becker?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Edward?
Mayor, I do, I do have one item that I want to, or correction that I want to bring to the record. You have in front of you a staff report, a corrected staff report for consent item number one, the release of code enforcement lien. The stipulation agreement, or the settlement stipulation is correct. So, your, your document's correct. The staff report is, is, needs to be corrected to read 23,000. It says seven in written format, and then it says 23,000 on the staff report. 23,000 is the correct amount. So, everything else is correct, the stipulation agreement is correct.
Thank you, Edward. Okay, public comment. Susan?
Hanson. He wants to go first.
All right.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Joshua Grossman-Claus, and I am the Band Director down at Wakava High School. I've lived in Florida my entire life. I grew up in Stewart, Florida, so a real Florida native. I went to Martin County High School, graduated there as a member of that band, went to Indian River State College, graduated there as a member of that band, and then I went to Stetson University and graduated with my Bachelor's in Music Education and performed with that band, and now I am here in Apopka talking about my band program and my students. Before I forget, I hope to see you all on Friday night as Wakava takes on Apopka right down the road here. I think it's going to be a great event, not sure how it's going to go for our team, but we're looking forward to it. But that's one of the great things about my job, I think I have the best job in the world, is I get to work with young students every single day, and we get to do, we get to make music. And one of the great things about Friday night, if you're able to come out, is that both myself and the Band Director at Apopka, Mr. Langford, we let the football team settle the rivalry stuff, we focus on making sure that our students are having a wonderful opportunity and experience through music. My job as a teacher and as an educator is to make good people, and the vehicle that I use to do that is my band program. I see students from all over the, the county, as well as a majority of them from here in Apopka, and it's one of the great things that I get to see, the diversity of students that we have, and to get them that same unified experience. One of the things that we're working towards right now at Wakava High School with the band program is to get these kids to understand that they are an important part of the future, not just for their own lives, but for their community, especially the community here in Apopka. And one of the things that we always try to instill in them is confidence, self-esteem, and pride in what they're doing. And one of the first things that everybody notices, especially with our marching band, is how they look. Because a lot of people love music and enjoy music, maybe they don't know a lot about it, but they know what they see, and they know what looks good, and they know what sounds good second. And we're raising money for our new band uniforms. And my presence here is to help raise awareness about that, because we still have our, our kids at Wakava, we're not Apopka High School, but they're still Apopka students. Over the course of 10 years, we've had close to 2,000, excuse me, 14 years, we've had close to 2,000 students pass through the Wakava High School band program, and those students are, have all graduated, gone out, and a lot of them have come back to be members of the community. And one of the things that I get to enjoy as part of my job is to see those students after they graduate, come back, visit a football game. Where do they go? Right back to the band, because it becomes such an important part of their high school time. So, I just wanted to make sure that I'm advocating on behalf of those kids, and one of the things that, and everybody here, please come out Friday night to see both band students, and to see what we have going on, and one of the most important things that we have going on with both bands is creating that environment to help those kids become successful. And, well, when you see on Friday night, you'll see what we're going for and how the difference of what we're going for with new uniforms, how much of a big difference that can make. I'll never forget the first time I put on my high school band uniform, I felt just something different, and that's what all of the kids deserve to feel. Our uniforms at Wakava are 14 years old. You can't even really tell that they belong to Wakava High School, because, well, they're very nondescript. I think they were ordered when they knew what the school was going to be called, and they knew what the school colors were. That's it. There was no mascot. They're kind of falling apart. So, we're working to raise money to get these new uniforms, along with our principal, to help cover those costs, and so far, we are at about $10,000 of a projected $90,000 cost to raise those uniforms, and we're going to be continuing to raise funds for those. But I just wanted to, to introduce myself and raise awareness for everybody that we have students that are going to be coming back to our community that can have a huge impact, and my job as their band director is to make sure that they become good citizens who understand, respect, values, discipline, self-esteem, and confidence, and build confidence. And you only look, or only feel as good as you look. This is our sample uniform. Our quote we received two years ago, when we started the process and before everything went crazy, was $90,000, and of course, I have been told that those costs have gone up a little bit. We are working to raise at least half of that cost with our principal out Wakava High School, working to cover the rest of that cost. So, if you're looking to support the band program at Wakava High School, we're looking forward to you. We have, we, we want to build these kids up. These kids are the same kids that go to Apopka High School, go to Wakava High School, we have the same. have the same great kids, they deserve the same great experience.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Here you are. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Nancy, I am the Wakava High School Band Parent President. And just to, I'm not going to speak long, I just want to add to what Mr. Gia said, we made a little presentation for you. We took a shot at asking for any kind of money at this point, because honestly, anything that you can feel, you can help us with, would be great. The band parents, we're trying a bunch of different fundraisers coming up, we've, just this year alone, we've already banked $5,000 this year. We got kind of sidelined by COVID, unfortunately, before, but we're still, we still have a couple more fundraisers to do. I've also created a, we have a band website with a page devoted to the fundraiser, and Mr. Frank Taylor is here from Music to My Mind, a local charity that helps fund music and education in the community, and his charity is helping us raise funds. He has a, he has a drive that he's working with, and we're going to be working with the Apopka Chamber of Commerce, to try and raise funds through like a crowdsourced funding too, as well. So, anything that you guys can help us with, these kids are really good kids, I don't know if most people know this, but kids in the arts always do better academically and in their community, are joiners, not people that sit on the sides, and our kids at Wakava, while they only comprise about 5% of the school, they're 25% of the top 5% of students. So they are overperforming by 500%. So, let's, you know, as a resident, I kind of want to, you know, encourage that, so anything you can do would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Quick note, I was pleasantly surprised to see Mr. Taylor in the audience. Him and I were class of 96 classmates together from Lake Brantley High School, and, by the way, both band members, the marching patriots. We, our uniforms were actually Minutemen Patriot uniforms that were, you do take a lot of pride when you put those uniforms on and you represent your high school, so just FYI, and I told Frank prior to the meeting, our discretionary funds are only $3,000 total for the, for the year, so 2,000 might be a stretch, but I'm happy to, happy to help. Yeah, yeah.
I do believe they had a custom, Mr. Becker's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming in.
Well, you certainly, I appreciate you coming, and you certainly will have a commitment from, from most of us up here, certainly from me. I'll speak for me.
I thought it was interesting at the game this last week, we noticed the bands were wearing shorts and T-shirts, and we were asking ourselves, is this a new trend, or, but I really believe in that, how they dress, it really affects how they feel, and it really does make a difference, so.
We don't have to give influence to put them all right there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
That it? All right. Okay, consent agenda, does anybody need to have any of those items pulled off the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion to approve the 12 items on consent. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Can I just kind of say congratulations to Sergeant Edwin Chit, Chit, how do you pronounce this? Chitlin. I certainly have worked with him over the years, and he has, I don't know, how many years does he have, Chief McKinley?
I think it's 21.
24. So, please let him know on behalf of the council here that we thank him for his service, and certainly wish him the very best in his retirement.
Yes. It's, family always comes first, I always tell all the staff, is, you know, never let family get, never let your job get in the way of family, and so he's, he's taking care of his family, which is what he should do, so.
24 years is a long time, so we thank him for his service.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Okay, business item, Allison, are you up?
Good afternoon, Allison Williams, Planner 1 with the city's planning division. The subject property is located east of State Road 429 and west of Grand Avian Parkway at 2500 Gallinule Drive within the Avian Point Plan Development. The major development plan details the development of a proposed apartment complex consisting of 276 units on 30.4 acres. Parcel B2 was approved for 480 units in the PD master plan, while 276 units are being proposed in the first phase. Maximum building height of 50 feet and a minimum living area of 762 square feet has been proposed by the applicant, which is consistent with the Avian Point PD master plan. The applicant is proposing 138 one-bedroom, or studio apartments, 123 two-bedroom apartments, and 15 three-bedroom apartments. Six apartment buildings and 10 garages are proposed in the first phase of the multifamily development. 483 parking spaces are required, while 486 are provided, with 80 spaces in garages and 16 accessible parking spaces. Pursuant to policy 16.2 of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, 20% of the parking spaces provided must consist of pervious material. In accordance with the approved master plan, the amenities include five park areas, a clubhouse, swimming pool, dog park, playground, and a community garden. The site will be accessed via Gallinule Drive slash Grand Avian Parkway. The applicant is required to construct a secondary access point within 24 months concurrent with the second phase of the apartment complex. The applicant has committed to conducting a transportation impact analysis after Phase 1 of the development is constructed, and 10% occupied to assess the impacts of Phase 1 and Phase 2. The findings of the study will determine what transportation improvements are required to mitigate the impacts of both project phases. The mitigation will be required to be constructed concurrent with the construction of Phase 2, and must be operational before Phase 2 receives its first certificate of occupancy. The applicant proposes live oaks, cypress trees, southern magnolias, crepe myrtles, and Sylvester palms. Above is the proposed architectural elevations. Staff recommends approval, DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Avian Point B2 multifamily major development plan. Staff and applicant are here to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Allison? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the Avian Point Parcel Multifamily Major Development Plan.
And that motion does include the condition that stated there?
Yes.
And so moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, major development plan, Clerkona Office Warehouse, Jean?
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Clerkona Office Warehouse Major Development Plan. The property is located on the southwest corner of Keene Road and Clerkona Road. Aerial shows that the project is east adjacent of the existing Jellystone Park Camp Resort. The project site consists of an assemblage of three parcels totaling 9.41 acres. The applicant proposes two warehouse buildings, each containing 48,000 square feet of warehouse and office area, for a total of 96,000 square feet. The buildings will be rear-loaded with a core area position between them. Truck parking will also be contained between the buildings, therefore truck parking will not be visible from the adjacent properties or the public right-of-way. There will be no outdoor storage use. Site is or will be accessed from Clerkona Road, right and left turn lanes will be installed at the site entrances. Shown are the proposed architectural elevations for the buildings. Sycamores, live oaks, red maples, and southern magnolias and crepe myrtles are provided within the 20-foot, 25-foot wide northern boundary of the project. Live oaks and red maples are alternatively planted within the parking landscaping islands, and hollys, myrtles, and drake elm trees are shown within the 15-foot wide landscaping buffer adjacent to Clerkona Road. Additionally, a 25-foot wide landscape buffer is proposed within the southern boundary. The DRC recommends approval, and on October 12, 2021, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Clerkona Office Warehouse Major Development Plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Clerkona Warehouse Office Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean?
Did you say that a light was at the north or south entrance there?
The turn lanes? There will be right, right and left turn lanes at the entrances.
But you didn't say there was a new traffic signal.
No, sir.
Any other questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the Avian, excuse me, the major development plan for the Clerkona Office Warehouse.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, consent order, Michael?
Good afternoon, presented, the item presented before you right, right now consists of a consent order that was entered into between the city and the Department of Environmental Protection. This consent order is a equivalent akin to a settlement agreement issued by, between the city and DEP, in order to resolve two outstanding issues that are outlined in your staff report, as well as in the consent order. Item number one dealt with a wastewater spill that was addressed by the city and cleaned. The spill constituted a violation of DEP rules. Now, DEP issued, proposed issuing a fine for the unauthorized spill, as well as civil costs. Now, however, the city has agreed, and DEP has accepted, that city will do an in-kind contribution to prevent and to address these issues, and that contribution on the part of the city will offset the fine that was imposed by DEP 100%. So therefore, as to the first item, the city is actually only liable for $500, which are the administrative costs for DEP. The second item that was addressed were concerns regarding the, as part of a DEP inspection, that certain inspection reports relating to cross-connection were not submitted for the years, I'm going to clarify the years, 17, 18, and 19. DEP issued a warning letter, and the city has agreed to conduct updates to the cross-connection ordinance, as well as a cross-connection manual. The parties have agreed on the dates for these to take place, they are to be done by the end of this year, so December 31 of 2021, with distribution, notice distributions to be done by January 31, and inspections to be started by February 1 of 2022. Between now and the end of the year, staff will be preparing these amendments to be presented to the city council for approval. At this time, there really is no substantive discussion in regards to what these amendments will take place, this is just, these amendments are going to occur as part of the consent order, which is, again, akin to a settlement agreement with DEP. To clarify, DEP did not issue any fines relating to cross-connection. The agreement solely stipulates that the city agrees to review their ordinance and provide amendments to the ordinance, review their manual and provide amendments to the manual, and that these amendments will be provided to DEP as part of this consent order. But there was no monetary or financial liability on the part of the city for the second portion of this consent order. The fines were solely limited to the wastewater spill, and that, those fines were offset by the in-kind contribution that the city will do, to offset the fines by 100%. So in the end, with these two events, the only financial liability to the city is the $500 administrative fee. So at this point, I'm seeking that the council authorize the mayor to sign the consent order. DEP has already signed the consent order, so DEP is awaiting the city's signature to this consent order, which will settle the two issues with DEP, and the matter will be resolved and settled, and we may, we will proceed forward. So at this point, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
Where did this occur?
The spill, it would, let me clarify.
Vic wrote.
It was a water main break, and...
Vic wrote.
It was at 2807 South Binion Road.
Say that, say that again?
2807 South Binion Road, was the, it was a water main break.
So, obviously, that's, a break is not a negligent thing on our behalf, the negligence wasn't that it broke and that we didn't fix it correctly, the negligence was that we didn't report it?
I wouldn't state that it was negligence, it's, it's, there was a discharge, and then, and, and the city...
So it wasn't just because something broke, it was because it wasn't maintained properly?
No, there's, that the consent order is not going to that issue, it is basically, what we have is an unauthorized discharge, so that's how DEP characterizes it in the consent order. So that just, that simply, the discharge occurred, and the city did, did actually contain, I believe it was the, of the, let me get the facts exactly in the order, but there was a, of the amount of the spill, 17,563 gallons were recovered, as well as the contaminated soils were replaced, and, and the, whatever impacts were minimized on the part of the water main break.
So, have we figured out why we lapsed in those reporting, and we put something in place that it won't happen again?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was reported, it wasn't, it was not reported, that you're conflating the not reporting of the cross-connection ordinances with the, the first aspect was just simply that, that was an unauthorized discharge of wastewater. The water main break itself was what, what DEP is citing, was citing us for.
Did it affect any of the residential communities up there?
To my knowledge, no, and there's no reference to DEP.
It was, it was next to the Magnolia Park trailer, we went out, I mean, I was out there with Glenn, we were out there on a weekend, and, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't that bad, but yeah, we were out there cleaning it up, it, one of the pipes had just kind of buckled, and snapped, and discharged, and got right on it and fixed it.
Yeah, and DEP concluded in their consent order that the discharge only impacted the ground.
But it just says that the city failed to submit annual reports, and so...
That's two different issues.
There's two different issues, there's two separate issues.
So addressing that part?
The annual reports are relating to cross-connection, they're not part of the water main break.
Okay, but relating to that, we put something in place where we won't have that happen again, I just want to make sure that we don't get that, okay. One other question, the in-kind project, what does that mean?
What is it?
Are we basically going to have to spend that many dollars somewhere else within our city? So we do have to spend that, but it's to our benefits.
Correct, it's part of that, I think staff is, I believe some staff is here to clarify what the, the in-kind contribution, but that the city will provide an in-kind contribution, and DEP has accepted the city's in-kind contribution as part of this consent order.
Okay, but we don't have any idea right now what?
I don't have the details, I can, I will defer to staff to provide what the...
And that's where we're getting the, the all-electric car? Yeah, all-electric car. Okay, we're going to have our first all-electric car.
Who's that, I'm sorry, the in-kind project has already been decided? Who's, who in the staff?
Again, deferring to staff, deferring to Public Works for that.
Okay, is there someone from Public Works? No. Yeah. Just so that the public knows, what's our in-kind project, and what are we planning to do?
As Mr. Rodriguez was saying, Glenn Brooks, Water Resource Operations Manager, City of Apopka, Commissioners Mayor, the P2 project that we're looking to do is electric car, it's going to be to use for our water department, we have a new, we'd hired someone for our backflows, and that's what we'll be, be doing, electric car.
You'll be doing what with the electric car?
We will, staff will be, will be replacing a gas vehicle with an electric car, that our staff will be using, that'll help with emission control, and DEP has accepted that as...
As, as the in-kind project?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, just to, to clarify what, elaborate on what Mr. Rodriguez is telling you here, we're looking at, like I say, two different things here.
Okay.
The spill that happened, when we talk about that, it's a sewage spill from a lift station, okay, where we had it, and with that spill, it goes under our permit, our wastewater operating permit, and if you'll look around, these are happening all over, but the governor we have now is a real, you know, driving that, no longer putting up with this spill and infrastructure, so, so that's what, you know, that's what we were hit for, that's what the fine is for. Again, you're looking at the, the other things that Mr. Rodriguez was saying on the backflow devices, there was nothing on the city's part, the only thing is the 17, 18, and 19, that didn't get, you know, we have sent, submitted those, so I just want to let you guys know that we have, you know, Jorge and his group has, has complied and done, made sure all that is done. I know that was one of your questions there, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's a check that, you know, a reminder that we don't miss something.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, when you said it was a sewage from the lift station?
Well, it's our transmission lines from our lift stations, as you, as you guys all know, we have lift stations all over the city.
We do.
And... And, uh, sewage is pumped from there to our wastewater plant.
Right.
Okay, so you're gonna have failure no matter how, you know, it's, these things are gonna happen. The thing is, staff got out there, they reported it as a state warning point, as we, you know, as required by the state, and they've made the repair. DEP doesn't care, they're still...
And there wasn't anything wrong with that?
Yeah, there's nothing, anything wrong, nothing that we done wrong, nothing staff done wrong. These things happen and they're gonna happen. And if you'll look around at other municipalities, I just pulled some up today, I'm just saying, you guys check for your records. Every municipality has the same thing that we got going on. It's cause, you know, they're...
Do our lift stations get a, either a quarterly maintenance? How are we, how do we maintain our lift stations?
The lift stations, yes. We have PMs that we do the maintenance on those. Again, there's no way of knowing what transmission lines are in the ground. I mean, we're, we're doing a study on those now, you know, we, it was, as, you know, we have some aging pipes that's in the ground, that's some 40, 50 years old. And, uh, you know, we're doing a study on that now to determine, you know, where we think some of these problem areas will be. But again, this one that broke was 10 years old, 15 years old? So there's no way of knowing that that would, you know, that you can, you can predict where this may happen. You know, the only thing we can do is look at our aging infrastructure, some of those lines that's 40, 50 years old and say, you know, we need to, those are where we need to allocate our funds and get those replaced.
So that's interesting. So you actually have a study that's ongoing right now?
Yes, and Vlad can kind of let you know where we're at on that, but yes, we have a study that we're doing.
Oh, okay. All right, I don't want to keep asking because then we'll get into this.
Okay.
But, all right, thank you. No, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Commissioner?
I mean, my general question was, did you, did you want to go?
The only thing I was gonna say was that, uh, in reference to the backflow preventers, uh, I know that several residents have already began receiving, uh, information in the mail for them to report, uh, their check valves.
Yeah, every, everybody's gotten it by now, yes. It's cause it was, it was the month of October and it's, it's been in the newsletter a couple of times, uh, in the weekly newsletter, so everybody should have gotten, um, at least one or two touches from, from the city on your backflow preventers.
Right, and those was in the utility bill, so if there, in a residence is listening and you overlook those, uh, we ask if you would go back and pull those out.
Yes, yes. And we, we just hired somebody from Orange County, she just retired from Orange County last year and we've brought her on as our, our backflow preventer, you know, um, coordinator. So we've got, got a really qualified staff member now to take care of that for us.
Yeah, we have Paula Brown, uh, who is with us, uh...
So we've hired someone that is an expert for backflow?
Yes.
To do what?
Can I, can I ask the questions first on this topic and then we can go to the backflow piece?
Okay.
So what you're asking for today and, and the approval of the, the motion or approval of the business in front of us, really what we're approving is in that last paragraph. Are you asking the council to approve the timeline, the milestone dates that you have outlined there? And then you're gonna be bringing stuff back to council at some point to approve any cross connection, uh, policy changes, ordinance changes, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay. So the December 31st, the January 31st, or December, yeah, December 31st, January 31st, February 1st on that piece?
Correct, those are deadlines that we agreed, that we basically agreed with DEP that this is how we're going to address the issue and we're gonna meet these deadlines. And DEP has accepted those deadlines.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's clear for me. The second piece, as we're talking about backflow, so I know in the budget workshops, we're talking about the nuance of backflow testing and things like that. Chalk me up as somebody that never opens my newsletter from billing utility. I, I'm just that person, I just go online and do it. But there wasn't, it didn't seem like there was a definitive outcome as it related to backflow testing during that session. Has there been a more definitive, uh, direction as it relates to backflow testing and the expectation from resident versus city, that sort of thing?
You're, you're saying where we're going with it?
Go, go, go.
Yeah, so I, I think there was a lot of, um, uh, confusion around who's supposed to be doing what during the backflow process, right? It gets, it gets certified when the, the home is constructed, but then there was this expectation that residents should test it themselves, but yet, you know, you may send out dunning letters or reminder letters that really there was no, um, consequence.
No teeth in it to get the homeowner to comply.
Correct, so how have we changed that, what's changed?
That, that is one thing that we're, we're looking at and it's gonna be the will of, uh, of, of...
Michael's, Michael's working on that.
Michael was, was looking at, you know, the will of...
So that'll be part of this, this milestone?
Correct, that's what's gonna be part, that's, that is then a point, that's gonna have to be a decision without getting into the details now because we don't have anything to present it, but that's gonna be a decision for how far the city wants to take the per, the, um, the amendments, um, how far above the requirements that Florida Administrative Code requires presently under the current ordinance as well as the present Florida Administrative Code. And I think it's important to stress, the onus and the responsibility falls on the property owner. There is no active obligation on the part of the city to go onto private property to fix, test, or replace these devices. Statutory obligation coming down from the state is on the private, on the property owner. Property owner is responsible for looking at their device, making sure it works, and then submitting the results of their own inspection to the city. But there's no, if, there is no, nowhere statutorily, um, within the statutes that there's an affirmative obligation on the part of the city to go on to, um, private property and replace, repair, purchase, own, um, diff, the review of the other ordinances that are with, from our neighboring municipalities, of all of them, only, excuse me, only two are different. One is Orange County, and Orange County actually has physically taken control and ownership of these devices on everyone's private property. Orlando has a, has a similar program, but, um, that's a policy, this policy decision for the city to take of whether you're gonna undertake to, to take public ownership of private property is, that's, that's something you need to consider.
But point being, when you all have a staff recommendation, what you're citing now, what your recommendation might be from leading a program like that will be part of that packet material that will be presented to us before February 1st.
Right, that's for your adoption prior to, um, based on the way that the, uh, the deadlines have been presented to DEP, second reading is gonna have to occur at that second December, um, city council meeting in order to meet the deadlines that, um, DEP and the city have agreed to.
Okay.
Yeah, one more thing I just wanted to say, uh, looking at that consent order, you know, mayor mentioned that we brought Paula Brown on from Orange County. This is her expertise in what she had done over there for several years. Looking at the consent order, you know, it said no later than December 31st, 2021, respondent will provide a copy of the updated cross connection manual to the department. Just want to clarify that the manual has been updated, it was revised and modifications are being made. That deadline will be met. And no later than December 31st, 2021, respondent will provide a copy of an updated cross connection ordinance. The ordinance has been updated, it was reviewed and modifications are being made, so that deadline is, will also be met. December 31st, 2020, respondent will have distributed a risk assessive surveys on, to all their customers. And as I think Commissioner Becker, you had mentioned, surveys were sent out to all customers, 24,597. They were out September the 15th through October the 15th.
What was the number, 24,000?
24,597.
And that'll be done before?
It's already been done.
It's already been done. The methods that was used to deliver those surveys were USPS, uh, email, City of Apopka website link, the Apopka newsletter, and next door website. So, and then, uh, another one is no later than January 31st, 2024, respondent will have distributed notice to test letters to all their customers. The notice to test letters will be sent out to all active customers in cycles beginning, right, November the 15th, 2021, to January the 15th, 2022, to ensure that the letters will be received by January 31st, 2022. So, you know, we're doing our part. One of the things that, uh, that we've spoke about is having maybe, uh, Commissioner Becker, you know, what, what do we do for his teeth? We can, we were looking at maybe just doing an incentive program to try to get people to comply to do it. I mean, I know, you know, what else do we want to do unless it's the will of this council to go adopt something more stringent?
And Commissioners, that will come, um, like Michael said and Commissioner Becker, to your point, uh, when the ordinance has come, that's when you will see all of that, all of that backup and everything, absolutely, because it all has to be done through an or, an ordinance, um, in order for us to enforce it. So you'll see all of that. We have some, some, there's some ideas, staff's worked on some good ideas that you'll see that will help. I think also another important point, um, Commissioner Smith, to your point, the surveys, if you still have them out there, they're on your bill, if you got them electronically, they're on the back of there, if you still got it laying around the house, that survey, you know, the more of those we get, the better, because then we'll have a better, you know, um, a better, um, idea of, of, um, what people have out there, what they think, what their thoughts are, whatever, so that we can, can educate everybody, um, and get everybody on the same page. So I think if you still, it's a great time to point that out, if you still have that survey, it's laying around the house somewhere or whatever, get it filled out, it's never too late to send it in, so, um, that would be great.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, all right. Need a, um, motion to approve the consent order between the City of Apopka and Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, seconded by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2849.
Ordinance number 2849, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from residential multifamily RMF, community commercial CC and transitional T to Plan Development PD for certain real property located at 1801 Martin Road, 1890 and 1900 South Hawthorne Avenue comprising 69.65 acres more or less and owned by Emerson Point Phase 2 LLC, providing for direct directions to the Community Development Director, severability conflicts and an effective date.
Allison, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve... Yes, oh, okay, sure.
Good afternoon, Jimmy Palm with App and Engineering at 2221 Lee Road, Winter Park. Um, the only item we wanted clarification on is right now, the development agreement. It carries some conceptual costs that were used to calculate the bond amounts and we just wanted to verify that if this project moves into final engineering, um, these bond amounts can be revised to reflect the actual construction costs associated with the, with the development. So if you refer to page three of the development agreement?
Page three? Wait a minute. One, two, three. Where are we?
Okay. So now where are, so we're on page 138 in our book and what, where are we at now?
So if you see on our projected total cost, there's, there's projected costs just based on current, uh, values, based on other developments, you know, in the same vicinity of our site. And these amounts were used to calculate the bond amounts, which, um, if you refer to the next page, there's, um, uh, amounts and types of security for the performance and maintenance bonds. And there's a value listed in there and we just wanted to, uh, verify that since these are conceptual in nature, once we proceed through final engineering and, and get an actual accurate, uh, contract amount based on the, the value of work, the, the bond amounts can be updated to reflect the actual percentages, excuse me, of the, of the actual contract. So, for example, a performance bond is, is 110% of the contract amount. Um, you know, right now, since they're conceptual and they may change, we just want to make sure that the bond amounts can reflect that, the percentage of the actual contract and not these conceptual amounts that are included with the development agreement.
Michael, how do we?
How do we kind of?
Michael?
Well, I, we were just discussing, there's, no, really isn't any objection if that's what the costs are gonna be for the, for him and those are the amounts that are bonded out.
But are we, but are we, now are we opening up something for, for future develop, I mean, it, it's, it's looking at whatever the, the estimated, I mean, so if it goes higher than they would pay a higher performance bond as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I would, I would tie the performance bond to the costs that are provided, as long as we have accurate records of those costs that are tied to the bond, then, um, that should be sufficient.
So, so how would we, on the developer's agreement, how would we, how would you recommend that we?
Well, the percentages are listed for, for the amounts, so as long as those percentages, um, you know, could be reflected on the actual construction amounts when we receive them further down the road, then that's fine with us. We just want to make sure, I mean, as you said, if, if the costs are greater, you know, right now, if, if the maintenance bond, you know, uh, says it's, or a performance bond says it's $5,009,74,808, that can be updated to reflect the actual percentages.
Well, can we just on par, on section E within that paragraph, say amount of 110% of the estimated or actual total cost, whichever is lower?
Yep, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Can we just work that into the motion?
But if we're gonna set, we're gonna establish the baseline cost, then have it defined, that should be sufficient.
Okay. So you want me to?
Yeah, you wanna make a motion with that?
So I'll make the motion to approve, um, ordinance, what are we on, 2849?
Yes.
Uh, with modification to section 3E?
3E and the maintenance bond is covered under section 4B on the following page.
Both with language that would say 100, 110% of the estimated or actual total cost of improvements or the amount, or, or what's lower and then the amount stated.
Correct, the, the only difference is the performance bond is 110% of the amount and the maintenance bond is 10% of the, uh, remaining amount when that bond is applied for, um, just to ensure that...
But the, but the language would be, okay, so throw out the 110. We're just changing the sentence post where it's, says percent of the estimated or actual total cost for the improvements, whichever is lower.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Good, Michael?
That's good.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, ordinance number 2868.
Ordinance number 2868, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from PD Plan Development District to RSF 1B Residential Single Family District Large Lot for certain real property located south of Shopkey Road and east of Plymouth Sorrento Road comprising 14.7 acres more or less and owned by Directions Fellowship, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Allison? Oh, Phil, I'm sorry, Phil. No changes, great, thank you. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2868.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Okay, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2872.
Ordinance number 2872, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to Plan Development PD for certain real property located at 2302 Okoye Apopka Road comprising 21.56 acres more or less and owned by, owned by Francis Heidrick Jr. and Kathy C. Tolbert, providing for direct directions to the Community Development Director, severability conflicts and an effective date.
Okay. Bobby? No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2872.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2864.
Ordinance number 2864, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use amendment of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429, 429 and Binion Road and north of Hooper Farms Road, owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper, Family Limited Partnership comprising 1.53 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean?
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approve, I'm sorry, this is a request to approve a small-scale future land use amendment from county rural, one dwelling unit per 10 acres to mixed use, 15 dwelling units per acre. Property is approximately 1.53 acres located west of State Road 429 and Binion Road and north of Hooper Farms Road. Our request to assign a future land use designation of mixed use is compatible with the designations assigned to abutting properties. Applicant is also applying for a mixed-use East Shore Gateway District zoning compatible with the proposed mixed-use future land use, which is the next item in your agenda. The DRC recommends approval of the change in future land use. On October 12, 2021, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use map designation from county rural to mixed use. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2864 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 17, 2021, or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Questions for Jean?
No.
Questions?
Let's go to the next one.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance 2864 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2865.
Ordinance number 2865. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural District to MUESGT, Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Subdistrict, for certain real property located west of State Road 429 and Benyon Road and north of Hooper Farms Road, comprising 1.53 acres more or less and owned by Bert E. Roper and Barbara C. Roper, Family Limited Partnership, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This request is to change the zoning of a property, of the property from County A1 Citrus Rural to mixed-use East Shore Gateway Zoning District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from County A1 Citrus Rural to zoning, Citrus Rural zoning to mixed-use East Shore Gateway Subdistrict. The proposed mixed-use East Shore Gateway zoning is compatible with the property due to the zoning being found in the vicinity. DRC recommends approval on October 12, 2021. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning from County, County A1 to MUESGT Gateway District. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2865 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 17, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2865 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2876.
Ordinance number 2876. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF 1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for certain real property located at, at south of Keane Road and west of Martin Road, comprising 8.81 acres more or less and owned by Nanec Investments LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean, you're back up.
I am. Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. Sorry about that. This is a request to change the zoning of a property from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate Zoning District to RSF 1B Residential Single Family Large Lot Zoning District. The subject property is vacant and consists of approximately 8.81 acres located south of Keane Road and Martin Road. The proposed RSF 1B zoning is compatible with the surrounding area. DRC recommends approval on October 12, 2021. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF 1A to RSF 1B, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2876 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 17, 2021. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
Yeah, this one gave me pause, actually. It says zoning is compatible with properties due to RSF-1B zoning being found in the vicinity, but where? I'm not seeing it.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner. If I had just minimized a little bit the scale of the zoning map, it would have shown RSF 1B towards the northeast of the area.
So, okay.
You got a pointer?
Yes, above.
Yeah.
Commissioner, the RSF 1B is located right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there it is, up there.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, of course, we're doing a lot of development around here, and I'm wondering, have the residences nearby there, there's no issue with them, have they been contacted? Because, you know, there's times where people are saying, you know, I'm just wanting some space and don't want to just suddenly be encroached upon. It's easy when they're right beside each other, but I'm just looking in that whole picture, where is there residences like that? And so just wondering, you know, is there any concern with neighbors?
Sure. I'll go ahead and defer it to the applicant.
Okay.
Jeff Summitt, Summit Engineering, 3667, Simonton Place, Lake Mary, Florida. So I did actually talk to the resident that lives to the west. They contacted me directly. I did send them a copy of our concept plan. I have not heard anything else back from them since I sent that email.
Okay, and no, well, it's not directly north, but the next property beyond. Just looking around there and just wondering, are we going to...
Didn't hear any, I mean, we do send out a notice. You know, we obviously post the property. I mean, I did hear from the person directly adjacent to us, and which I thought would probably be the most critical individual that we would want to talk to in regards to the site plan, and...
And they had no concerns?
I've never heard back from her.
How many do we send out, Jim? Do you know? Or Jeff?
We sent out, I, the rule says, I think, 300 feet.
Yes, I just know maybe 10 properties.
Yeah, 300 feet. I think actually, I think I do a few more just to be safe, Mayor, when I do these, because I get a list from, from staff, and then I also do my own list on the property appraiser's website when we send the mailers out.
So, I mean, 10 or 12, do you think, Bobby, or what? Okay, okay. No calls? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
While you're there, let me ask one question in reference to the concept plan. Do you think that's going to have any impact on that intersection that where that stop sign is?
You're talking about Keane Road and Martin? Is that where you're talking about, Commissioner?
Yes, Keane and Martin, yes.
I, I mean, currently, the concept plan's got like 22 lots on it. I mean, we're not talking a lot of lots here, so I'm not, it's not a big, a big traffic generator. Really, the reason for the request, I mean, it's already zoned, single-family residential, really the reason for the request, we have to extend utilities from Keane Road down to this property, so it's just kind of trying to balance all that stuff out, which will be good for you guys, because now we'll have sewer and we'll have water down there as well. So any of that future property that comes in, those utilities will be there.
Mr. Howell, so you have the RSF 1B up there, and I know that that big kind of quadrant north of Keane between Martin going over to Okoye, Apopka, is a highly sought-after land right now. We've got the potential commercial and grocer going to the west of that property. So the remainder of that, is that, and some of that's county, some of it's city?
Correct.
But on the county-owned property, are those something equivalent or similar to the RS, the RSF 1B typically?
Some of the county ones are equivalent. We have some of them that are probably county rural agriculture, just carryover from the old days. But it seems like in the county and in Okoye to the south and then Apopka to the north, it's all trending towards RSF 1B-style development in this area, 75-foot wide lots. Then, as you were saying, the further north you go, you get into the mixed-use East Shore Gateway, commercial apartments, and then Emerson Park, where you've got a very dense product in there.
Yeah. Because, I mean, going straight zoning on these things too will lend itself to having some more of that open space between homes, not necessarily a variety of product where you're getting some really closed stuff, and then, yeah.
Right. Yeah, and residential development would require to have a minimum of 20% open space per code, 75-foot wide lots, 7,500 square feet at a minimum, so there would be ample open space per code.
Great. Thank you, Bobby. Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2876 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2878.
Ordinance number 2878. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential very low suburban to agriculture for certain real property located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising 4.92 acres more or less and owned by Robert and Mary Singh, provided for, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from residential very low suburban to agriculture for approximately 4.92 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located off of Appy Lane. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are in the vicinity, along with the Northwest Recreation Complex to the south. The property is owned RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District, and the applicant has applied for the agriculture zoning district, which is on the next agenda item. The proposed agriculture future land use is compatible with the proposed agriculture zoning districts in addition to the agricultural properties within the vicinity, including the agriculture zone parcels that are located to the west and east adjacent of the subject property that's highlighted in blue. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed small-scale future land use amendment to agriculture, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2878 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 17, 2021. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
Is that the nursery that's abandoned on...
On the, on the subject property?
Yeah. At Appy Lane? There's a, there's a single-family home, and then it used to be a nursery?
It's my understanding that there's a new single-family home on the property today, and I'm not familiar with the nursery on the property previously.
Okay. Where am I? I know I'm looking at that. I'm wondering. Because Appy Lane is a very small lane, you know, street that I pass all the time. Okay.
Okay.
They're going to make it anyway agricultural, so, yeah. Okay.
All right. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2878 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Oh, I know where it's at. I know where it's at. I saw, I remember the house now. I do.
Does the name ring a bell?
No, I, when you said it's a new residence, and that's right. It's a beautiful new residence on that property. Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 2879.
Ordinance number 2879. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to Ag, Agricultural District, for certain real property located north of Appy Lane and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising 4.92 acres more or less and owned by Robert and Mary Singh, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Phil? The applicant is proposing a rezoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to Agriculture District for approximately 4.92 acres at the same subject property as the previous agenda item. The proposed agriculture zoning is compatible with the previously proposed agriculture future land use, and the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to Agriculture District. The recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2879 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 17, 2021. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
No, I, I know where it's at now. It's actually next to Renewal Church. That's the property. That's it. All right.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2879 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-47.
Resolution 2021-47. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Level Terrace Neighborhood Improvement District in the City of Apopka to fund facilities, maintenance, and programs, street light, maintaining to the, and upkeep of the common property to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 1973632, Pren 3, Pren A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The resolution is a request to create the Level Terrace Neighborhood Improvement Special Assessment District. The particular neighborhood had an HOA. The HOA dissolved itself two years ago, almost three years ago now, and they've abandoned the retention pond that's on the east side of the property, as well as the fence along Votah is also the responsibility of the HOA, and there's some 2x4s holding the fence up, so this is a request to create the district. I will be coming back to you after the calendar year finishes with the assessment amount, and we will notify the property owners at that time what the assessment amount will be. But we want to get in there and make sure we get the pond taken care of before it falls into disrepair like the one did at Martin Place.
Any questions for Chuck?
No. You, I remember the last time you asked us if we hadn't a chance to go look at it. I thought it was a park.
Sort of like a jungle.
When I went in. It's a small community. How many homes in there?
Um...
Less than 20, right? It's very small.
There's right around 40, if I remember right off the top of my head. I did, I did look at each of the properties, and more owners are off-site owners than actually live there, so that's, that's typical when the HOA fails, is when it becomes more of a rental property than it is an investment property.
Yeah. Wow.
All right. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-47.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-55.
Resolution 2021-55. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Golden Orchard Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Pren 3, Pren A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Again, Chuck Maverick, City of Minnesota. This is a request to create the Street Light Special Assessment District. The property owner currently, which is the developer, has made the request for us to create the district, and after the new year, I'll be coming back to you with the estimated cost. That will be assessed on the property tax bill.
Any questions for Chuck?
Uh-uh.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-55.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-59.
Resolution 2021-59. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a budget amendment.
Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director for the City of Apopka. Resolution number 2021-59, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. The First Amendment is for the recognition of the fiscal year 2021 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant for $17,656, and these funds are going to be used to purchase new equipment to enhance the evidence and canines sections of the Support Services Division. The Second Amendment is the individual distributed wastewater treatment system maintenance, and this budget amendment includes changes in funding and appropriations related to the San John River Water Management, and it recognizes revenue to be received from the[1754.61] from the owners of each project location, which is a total of 30 authorized, and the amount for that is $13,320. The Third Amendment is for the Leaf Station Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition, which is CADA, and this is to recognize funds received by developers to improve the CADA system, and that is a total of $16,000. And the request is for the council adoption of Resolution Number 2021-59 of approximately $46,976.
Any questions for Gladimir? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-59.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Okay, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Becker, you want to start us out?
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest thing that I've, I'm hearing, there's a lot of talk around, you know, last meeting, meeting before that, I can't remember which one it was, around the development in the city center on the multifamily. A lot of stuff going on in the community, I'm getting a lot of feedback there. So, I was hoping that Mr. Hitt could provide some guidance to us, because, you know, I've reviewed the development agreement, I'm, I'm struggling to find where it says that, you know, all projects that would come to that area would not come before this council for review from either a concept, you know, plan perspective, things like that. And then, two, you know, what's, if, if you can point to that language within the developer's agreement, and that indeed would not come back before council, how are you interpreting the concept of the project in play versus what's in Exhibit G on the current development agreement as it relates to permitted uses, specifically number 34, residential multifamily non-subsidized market, and this one is market rent or market rate, however you want to refer to it. But I think we all, as a council, got a letter from Charter Oaks HOA today, Ms. Pusey. So, there was concerns there, and I think that's indicative of the concerns that are going up on this particular development. So, if you can just shed some light on that one, it would be helpful.
I, I, I'm gonna have to take a look at the development agreement, find the language regarding the, the approval process. I know it's in there, it's, it's kind of skewed, but it, it's, it is in there, but I'll have to find that for you. I just can't do it.
Yeah, I've gone through it a couple of times. The only thing that I can remotely see in one of the sections that says city staff, but it's not anywhere clear around there to say that you would have a final authority to approve anything that's going to go in city.
That, that I think was the language that was put in regarding the approval process.
Yeah, I was, I would hope that Mr. Rodriguez could, could review that to make sure that we're not misrepresenting to the public.
And, you know, in regards to the, the use itself, yeah, there is a, the statement regarding luxury or upper class, or upper-tier type development for the apartment complex, but you hit the nail on the head in regards to the permitted uses where it says non-subsidized. The way I would look at that is that if they're getting funding for, especially in affordable housing complex, that's subsidized. So, if anything, the, they, they could not build the way the development agreement is for that type of development at this stage. They would have to, they would definitely have to come back to the city council for the development agreement to be amended.
You, we'll just bring that up maybe next, next commission meeting under your report, Michael?
I can do that, I can make a review of the approvals.
Okay.
And I think we also need to have a clear understanding of what we mean by subsidized, because in some instances, subsidized means that the tenants are actually being subsidized to the cost of the living, not that the construction is being subsidized.
That would then be, right, that's, that's, that's a consideration, and something that you, as a body, will need to consider, limiting, or at least further describing defined terms, or we're going to get back to the same argument that we had a month ago, which is what is tobacco substitute and what is tobacco-related? It's true, there, there is going to be a semantics difference between is subsidized meaning the construction is subsidized, or does subsidized mean that the tenant's rent is subsidized? And what is the generally accepted term for subsidized? Is it, is it a rent subsidy? Because, in essence, the program, as I understand it, that was done by Orange County, is that the builder is, is taking from this pot of money to assist in construction costs. Now, is it because the pot of money is a public grant money? Does that mean it's subsidized, or is it a grant? Does, does, is a grant a subsidy, or is a grant a award? And I mean, it's, it's weird, we can be stuck in the weeds trying to, to, to limit a definition, and then any type of differences in the definition is, will be, could be subject to, to any type of appeal process by the property owner if the definition falls, doesn't fall their way. So, that's, these are things that we will have to consider, and you, as a body, will consider in narrowing what would be the properly defined terms, and that's what I'd need to counsel you on is, you know, you can't be necessarily careful. You move one thing, it doesn't necessarily mean that one thing is going to be affected.
Yeah, and I, I think that what, and the other issue you were talking about was, with, with the Community Development Department being able to, you know, not only do it, I mean, I, I think it was in the original agreement, but I know that Jim, last, the last commission meeting, you said you would, you don't want to be in that position, you want us to make the decision. And so, if we look forward toward that, I think that's, you know, something, if you'd also take a look at that. So, those two issues, Michael, be ready for next commission meeting. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Well, that was it. I just wanted to remind everyone that November is No Shave November, and I always participate every year. I haven't got...
Well, that doesn't work.
It's only been three days. And, and funds that are normally used for shaving during the month of November donate to, to cancer. And having just finished observing Breast Cancer Awareness Month, there's all types of cancers, and so therefore, any individuals that wish to do that and then donate those funds to a charity of your choice, I'm sure they will greatly appreciate it. The next thing is, this morning, I attended the Orange County Board of County Commissioners Agricultural Advisory Committee Board Meeting, and there was much discussion about the fertilizer ordinance that we're about to revise. And, and the reason why I bring that up is because with all the development that's going on here in our area, it's been determined that fertilizers, which contains nitrogen phosphorus, is contaminating the springs. And so, therefore, they want to revise the ordinance in order to prohibit, prohibit us from contaminating the springs anymore. And so, there is a, a formula, and, that I'm gonna post a link on my Facebook page and ask residents to take a look at it, because what they're saying is that 80% of the contamination is being caused by residents and not by the commercial applicators. And it's because the residents are not properly applying fertilizers to their lawn, and they're over-fertilizing that's causing the contamination. But there is a, a little, little formula that you could use to determine how much fertilizer you should apply and when to apply as well. And so, I will put that on my, on my Facebook page and ask the residents to, to help us in not contaminating our, our springs. I'm sure that nobody does that intentionally. And then, lastly, looking forward to the John Lane Gala on tomorrow, and if there are tickets still available, we encourage everyone to come out and join us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Bankson? Yeah, again, being on this end, starting from that end, really hit a couple of key points there. One, I, I appreciate Angie Pusey's letter and the concern there, and that's our responsibility to protect the citizens. So, if that is, we need clarity on that in the developer's agreement, because that's, in the same sense that we're fiduciary responsible, I, I think we need to protect those, that that's what went forward, and so that's what we need to uphold. So, if it doesn't meet that bar, we definitely need to protect that. And again, looking forward to the gala tomorrow night, it's going to be awesome. Had a great speaker. Yes, well, she's on American Airlines, let's hope she gets here. Commissioner Velazquez?
No, not much, other than, you know, Saturday sounds, and I've been promoting on the Facebook for the Philharmonic August for December 11. We'll do that. And just to thank the Recreation Department, you've done a really great job out in the amphitheater every Saturday, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Edward?
I don't have a lot. I do have, on the, the financial update, you see, we're starting a new fiscal year, already in the hole, but it's a small amount, so hopefully, it's 35% more than we were last year for this month. But it's a little more positive, I think, this year, but it's one thing we need to watch. So, we'll continue to watch it. For the public's benefit, you can see that our budget's $10.7 million, and that we've collected in the first month, 860, little more than $863,000. It's a $35,000 variance. So, you can see that, you know, we're already a little bit below what the projections were that we received from the state, but continue to monitor it. So, you have this information going forward, it's very critical, especially as we move through each month. With that, I have nothing else, Mayor, to report this time.
All right, thank you. Michael?
As part of my report, the one, going almost back to what was done during the council reports, but the, there actually was a closing on the sale of the parcel that would, is currently contemplated for the residential use in city center. The city completed the say, the sale to Taurus Development on, yesterday, Tuesday, the sale was completed, and the city should confirm, we should have received the wire fund. So, that transaction has occurred, the parcel's now owned by Taurus Development. Forward, going forward here, it's, whatever is, is going to be presented for approval will be subject to the developer's agreement and any other reviews on the part of the city.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, last up here, let's see. First off, we go ahead and, the, the Naomi Health Testing Site, you know, over, that's been at Edwards Field, where it's going to be closed on November 5th and 6th. We'll relocate to City Hall, right out here in the parking lot, on November 8th through Sunday, December 12th, so we can get through the Christmas season, all the, you know, things we've got going on. So, Naomi will start back up November 8th out here in our, out on Park Avenue in the city parking lot.
Which, in this parking lot?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, that's good, okay.
So, next up, we mentioned, you know, that we've got the Philharmonic coming on the 11th. Just want to let you know that we also, the week, the weekend before, we had scheduled for the Apopka Art and Music Fest, and the school board pulled back on the Sunday, the 5th. So, we need, it will only be a one-day event, it'll only be the 4th, but it'll be a lot of great music from our, our local schools here in the area, their art, as well as arts and crafters from, from the big region. So, we're, we're excited about that, and should be a good one, hoping this turns into a yearly event. Next up, just, just so you know, they're coming, we've got, you know, COVID has finally lifted, and so some of these, we've had a bunch of, of presentations and, and studies we've had out there, and we're finally starting to getting them, getting them back, and so we need to start to bring those forward. So, we need to have a, a rate study. The rate study for our water, reclaimed water, wastewater will be coming up very soon. We just got the road condition study back maybe three weeks ago, we've got a few tweaks to that, we want to bring that back. Hopefully, that will be the first week in December, looking to pull that back up. The Public Safety Building Needs Assessment, we've got some, some kind of renditions on what that might look like, want to bring that to your attention. And then, last but not least, the Northwest Rec Complex, we've got a long-term plan with a, with a big number, Mr. Foreman, 50 million bucks. So, anyway, we, we want at least bring that, as the consultant, we had to take a look at that and what, what that might look like. And then, last, next Tuesday, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 PM, or 9:30 AM, we'll have, the State of the City will be over at the VFW slash Community Center, State of the City. So, I hope everybody can come out. We've got tables for, I think, sponsors, and then there'll be, there'll be a light continental breakfast and seating for anybody that just, that shows up. So, it, it's free to anybody that wants to, to come. So, with that, hope you have a great day.